Call the Custer County Board of County Commissioners meeting to order at 9:00 a.m. Let the record show that today is February the 7th. Mr. Butler, would you care to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, sir? Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Kanda.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Present.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And clerk to the board Kelly Camper, present.
Okay, I'll say present.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
I do not have any.
I don't have anything.
Nor do I. Audience introductions.
Jackie Buehler for the Central.
Tracy Ballard for the Tribune.
Bob Jolly Airport.
Alan Butler Airport today.
May I thank you guys for being here? Mr. Bill brought in some donuts. You're welcome to...
Eat them.
Have at them.
Or look at them.
Did you make them?
No, I wish I could say I did.
Made the trip to get them.
Made the trip.
Yeah. I don't believe we have any minutes to approve, so we're good there. Commissioner Items. Mr. Kanda.
I don't have anything, do.
Okay. Mr. Prince?
I have two things.
Great.
Yesterday, you and I attended the Affordable Housing Committee meeting. It was outstanding. What we learned is that we could build a three-bedroom, one bath, one-car garage home in approximately $124,000. The problem rose, what adds to the cost of that would be the cost of a lot and in the infrastructure, water sewer, if this curtain gutter and all those things that go on with it. The school is looking at, they have seven lots on Main Street that already has the infrastructure in place. They're looking at potentially donating that to the affordable housing group.
Meaning there's water taps?
There's water taps, sewer taps. It already meets the code, so we don't have to put in roads and gutters and all that stuff that runs the cost up real high.
Electric, too.
Yeah. Has all the infrastructure. So, that was very encouraging. Now, there's no commitment at all from the school. It was just Monty Lee said that they felt that that was something that they would certainly consider. That's a huge hurdle for this, because the reason for affordable housing, this is not Section 8 housing, poor people housing, this is housing for people starting a career who want to come to work in Custer County. That includes our sheriffs who can't afford to buy a $350,000 house, our teachers who we'd like to recruit here can't find affordable homes. So, this is, I like to call them starter homes, but it doesn't have to be for a young couple, but it's kind of starter homes. And I thought it was an excellent meeting, and I thought, I walked down very encouraged that we're finally going to be on a path towards helping industry and any business can come in, anybody could use those homes, who want to hire people, so there's a place for workers to come study. So, that was the one thing.
So, how do you get the money for it? Is there grants like?
Money is not going to be difficult to get, believe it or not. The Upper Arkansas Area Council of Governments, their housing, I'm sorry, their housing unit has money for this type of project. They encourage it. There's also federal funds. There are state funds other than Upper Arkansas. And I think the funds will be the least of our hurdles. I think the biggest hurdle is going to be, we had one gentleman here, of course, it would have to go out to bid, but we had one gentleman here as a builder of affordable housing. In fact, he's one who brought a sample blueprint of what he could build for $125,000. He's a philanthropist. He's not interested in making a bunch of money doing this. Of course, it would go out to bid, whether he gets it or not, you know, it would be certainly how the bid turns out.
Who owns the house? Who would own the house?
And that is a question that's still in debate. It's possible that the Upper Arkansas Area Council of Governments would own it. It's possible that the committee could own it. There would be deed restrictions on it. What we're concerned about is someone moving into a house and getting a really great deal, waiting a couple of months, and then selling at market value. So, there'd be some kind of, we talked about, you know, we don't have details, of course.
Ain't the one I'm going to go out with.
But we were concerned about that, so we'd have deed restrictions.
Sounds interesting.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's a great plan. It'll be no cost to the county, but we could get some more people who could afford to live here to take advantage of the things that we have.
I wish I could have been there.
Can I interject about the ownership real quick?
Please.
The other, the other side, not the other side, but one of the sides of this whole affordable housing thing is that the ownership of that house would be almost like a holding company, short-term. We really want to get affordable housing so that people can buy them. We don't want to get into the rental market. We're after homes that people can afford to buy when they move to this county, either at a job entry level or...
Yeah, and we don't want to be main thing.
No. So, obviously, there's have to be some ownership initially until the house is bought and then subsequently sold, but that would be the idea, is to just think so.
And it's really very preliminary. The key was, once the school suggested that they may, and I want to, may, be willing to donate the property, a huge hurdle was overcome, because the real cost, this is not the building of the house, it's that infrastructure, streetlights, sewer lines, curb and gutter, roads, all those things that run the cost way up. So, it was a very encouraging meeting, and we'll just see where it goes, and I'll report back. I'm sure Tom will join me at the next meeting, and we'll report back and let you know what progress, if any, has been made. The second thing is, and I really don't, I'm very concerned about something, and I would just like to voice this. Action 22 has had their issues over the years, but recently, they got their act together. They had management issues. This is such an important lobbying group that I feel we need a Custer County Board of County Commissioners, Commissioner representing the county. I know we have delegated that over the last couple of meetings.
That's what I've been doing, I thought. What? I've been at the meetings.
Oh, have you?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We had a great one. I reported on it here. And then I had Ann sit in on one of them, because I couldn't make it.
Okay.
And then they came up, and she was actually here, and we had a meeting.
Okay. The impression I had, I retract what I'm going to say. The impression I had...
Because I agree with you. It is very important, and we've got...
Yeah. The impression I had was that this surrogate was going in your place, and I didn't feel it was appropriate.
No, no.
If that's not the case, I'm done. That's all I have.
Sure. That's fine. I, the last Action 22 meeting was in Custer County?
Yeah. She was making the rounds to everybody.
She being?
She being, can't say her name.
Chairman of the committee.
But she's in chairman. She's the lead. And it was very good, and she went to all 22 counties to say here, I'm invigorating this, whatever things, but, you know, we had about, and we had our reps there, the guys that are on the committee, Charles Stagerwalke and a couple others, and went through it. Very good.
Good. Yeah, I actually, I must have misunderstood or was not listening carefully enough.
Guys, don't listen to me.
I thought that Ann went to the first and the second meeting in your stead.
No. Well, she was there, too.
Right. But she wasn't replacing you. Yeah, okay. Okay. Good. Good. Okay?
Had a conflict at first meeting.
Anything else, sir?
No, that's it. Thank you.
I don't believe I have anything for Commissioner Items. Either. Mr. Smith, anything?
Nothing today.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Administrative Assistant?
Nothing today.
Thank you.
Could invite our new guest to have a donut.
Mr. John, yeah. You came in just after we did introductions. Welcome, John Johnston. There are donuts back there. Feel free to help yourself, courtesy of...
I saw Bill at the bakery. That's why I came.
Oh, you remembered there was a meeting or something. Good.
All right. Very good. Yes, ma'am.
You skipped over amendments to the agenda. Do you have any?
No, we didn't. And we said we didn't have any.
I thought I asked.
Oh.
That's that new medicine you're on.
There weren't any, I don't believe. But thank you, because the other, one of the meetings I did skip over.
I apologize.
No. Absolutely no problem. Then we'll move into staff reports. Our first report, it would be from the Airport Advisory Committee, gentle men, one or both. You're entirely welcome.
Where are you comfortable?
Yeah, I was thinking, I don't know if you know, we are live streaming these meetings, so we probably asked you to come forward for the microphone.
It's just NYI, it's not working real well, because CCA is down.
Oh, okay.
And central like this.
You're on Custer camera.
Where did, oh, I see. Probably come forward, and we'll make arrangements for a chair. Ms. Kelly, can you?
Just Bob the lighting do it.
Can you grab one of those black chairs, please?
Well, thank you very much. You're welcome.
Good morning, sir. Handshake here, you old rascal.
He's forgotten the protocol.
Kind of, kind of did forget there, didn't I?
Good morning. How are you? Thank you for the chair.
Glad you're here.
Good morning, sir. Sorry.
Good morning.
Bob, nice to see you. He was going for you.
Yeah.
I wasn't paying attention.
Kelly.
How are you?
I'm good. Well, good morning from Custer County, from your airport folks.
I love number six in your faces.
First of all, we'd like to, I would like to thank the Board of Commissioners for the appointment for the rest of the board, speaking for the rest of the board. We enjoy working at the airport and taking care of things out there. Appreciate you making me chairman. I've done a little bit of that. And you know what I found since, since I come back? Everything's different. Now, we use more, more technology.
Yeah.
Than we had before. Not that I was around when we used just typewriters, but we do have other things. So, we thank you from the, from the rest of the board members.
You're welcome.
Number one item Bob will get to on his report, but to let you know that Bob Jolly, me, Bob Custer, went to the Colorado Airport Operators Association, lovingly called a CAOA. They meet twice a year. We found that the winter meeting is probably more productive, because the Colorado Airport, Colorado Aeronautical Board meets with them at that time. So, we get to see the CAB, we call it, everything's out there, you know, and the CAOA together. Those boards have really changed personnel. It's been six years, and they've rotated out. The Colorado Aeronautical Board ran into some money issues about four years ago, and so we've had money cut off to airports improvements for about three years, but this year now they have the budget back. It amounted to about $11 million, I think, that was overbudgeted. It was just accounting errors, and no one was taking money or anything. It just, they...
Screwed up.
Yeah. They messed up big time. And I don't know if you've ever been to a JBC meeting, but it can get pretty wild in there, you know? There's about 25 people sitting around, and everybody's looking to protect their own So, what we found out at this meeting is not only had the people changed, but things were pretty much the same as they have been when we asked for improvements. On our list of improvements we needed, one of the things that we had down to start with is a fog coat of the runway, where they, they put a coating that seals the top of the asphalt, and then they come back, well, they chip seal, chip seal, they seal, crack seal, then they put the fog coat on, and then they do the paint. So, Bob and I are bopping along through the, down through the hallway, and Todd Green, the state planner for the Colorado Aeronautical Board, the state guys, we flagged him down, and he said, "Well, it's so good to see you," and all that stuff, and we said, "Great. How you doing?" He said, "Fine. I've been wanting to talk to you guys." Okay, what about? Were they like, "You don't get any money." He said, "We have some new people that index runways, and I'd like to bring them to Custer County and use your airport as a training device. We'll have them do the work." He said, "We'll check it, bring it back here, and the engineers check it." And then they have to do the paperwork. Said four, and they said, "Well, crack seal, fog coat, and paint." So, we said, "Well, that's a really good idea. I think, I think we can help you with that."
Mean they'll do more than just engineer it, they'll do it, too?
We're going to be the first, and they'll, yeah. In other words, you got the project, let's, let us use you to train with.
And they're coming out in May.
And they'll be here in May. Caitlin and Todd Green, and you've heard us talk about Caitlin. Caitlin's, I don't know what official the title is, really, but nothing goes through that office without Caitlin putting a stamp on it, so. So, it's important. She checks them. So, that's going to happen in May, and that's a really good thing for us. It's in the system, it's a...
No cost and no strings.
There'll be a cost, and I don't know if, if there'll be a...
Material cost.
A little match or material or whatever. Whatever it is, I don't know.
Were we budgeting, if I remember correctly, for that this year, to recode it?
I think we put 10 grand, was it?
Yeah.
And when we get down to it, hopefully, we maybe won't take that 10 grand.
How cool is that?
You know, we kind of estimated fat on that, and that's in the system. So, we feel pretty good about that. The, the rest of the state is in pretty good shape for airports. While CAB has not had much money, the local people have done like we have, just kind of taken care of our own thing and made sure things were safe and, and try to keep the public flying. Are you there on 3B, sir? I might have made a mistake. I didn't know.
Was that supposed to be training, correct, instead of raining for fog seal?
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine. I just thought maybe there's something going on.
Guess who called me first? Oh?
Gosh darn, Tom, raining fog.
It's supposed to be training for fog seal.
So, you're thinking of weather.
And so, and I put down raining, and then another airport board member said, "Do we have a meeting tomorrow?" And I said, "No, it's actually next week, but this is with, meeting with the Commissioner." And then, can you talk a little about fog seal? What fog seal does? What it is, what it does? Fog seal is applied hot, and I don't know temperatures and all that engineering stuff, but they have a truck, and you've seen these trucks. There'll be a big tanker somewhere, and then it'll be a little application truck, and...
Spray bar on it.
Yeah, yeah, with a spray bar. And the stuff's not thick and gooey, it's kind of a paint. It's more consisting of paint, and then they spray that over the runway, and it rejuvenates the surface of the blacktop.
Seals.
So, is FOG, is that an acronym for something? That's what, no, they just call it fog coat. Fog seal. Rather than a liquid coat or a chip seal. Okay. They spray that on there, and it dries, I think, pretty much immediately. We were landing on it four or five hours after, after they deployed it last time.
The airport won't be closed for any length of time?
We'd have to close it while they were on the runway.
Right.
Is that just one day?
And we...
Yes.
Notem it.
Notem it and put our big orange X's out.
Yes.
On it, and pilots are supposed to check those, notice to airmen, is what a notem is, to see if... I got away way across Nebraska at the airport we were going to land at. It was getting dark, and we're about out of fuel, and I hadn't checked a notem, and they had the airport all tore up. So, I had to go to Minot, which was kind of interesting. But you can get yourself in a big heap of problems if you don't pay attention, get in somewhere where it's dark, and then they got caterpillars, road grader sitting around on the runway. Talked with Dave Thompson. You guys, I think, have talked to him about the same time I did. I went and looked him up. And I don't know if you've seen the truck that they're proposing to put in a hangar out there, but it's one slick-looking truck.
Yeah, it is.
It's a good-looking truck. It has very few hours on it. It has the ladder system. It has a nozzle. We have two-story houses here, and this will, would be able to service a lot of things out. That's great. It will do. Where's the truck located now? It's at the firehouse. Is it? Yeah, they had it out the other day and cleaning it and waxing it all up. So, I think they've got all their stuff ready.
So, do you have to wax it for them?
Well, I asked him that, and he says, "No, it's already waxed." Probably, it will go probably in the middle bay. That other bay has that one brace that comes down and...
They interfere.
I agree with Dave. I kind of think it'd be a little close, you know, backing in and out in the dark and whatnot. He says he's got six young folks, whatever that means, that are going through fire, under 60, going through fire training, that live out there, that are excited about being able to operate that particular truck. So, that's about ready to go in, and I don't know where we stand on paperwork or any of that. I heard that mentioned at a meeting.
We, there was a minor amendment yesterday to the international agency agreement, which we approved yesterday, so I don't know what the other organizations are, but I think we did our share.
Okay.
So, was that truck purchased, actually, or is it just living here too?
I don't know that. I have not had an update from the...
Yeah. Last we heard, there was...
There was going to be somebody financing it.
There was a guy who said he might do it.
Right. Do you know, Alan, did you have a conversation with Dave about that or not? Because I haven't. Um...
No.
Yeah, let's take the short answer.
That's a finance.
Yeah, the last time we officially talked with... Finance officer. I don't know that. Dave Thompson, there was, there were still two or three options on the table about acquiring the truck, so I, as far as I know, as a commission, we have not been informed about what has happened.
No, they were looking at an individual to finance.
Yeah, they had. They had several different options and things to do. So, so that is about ready to go live out there. I think it's, I think it's a good idea. I think there's probably some small items we've overlooked, and they have two, but one, one thing, when we were talking to, the last conversation we had about the truck and where it was going, was Dallas said, "I'll show you how to get in the front door." Well, I sometimes have trouble getting in the front door, especially if I'm cold or in a hurry. So, it's probably going to be better if they have a backup key to go through the back door. That's just me. Haven't talked to my people. Because the front door's keypad? It's a keypad. And sometimes it, it usually works, but if it didn't, they need a, I mean, wouldn't there be something, you know, they get out there and they can't get in the building to get in?
The hangar door or the, the roll-up doors have a keypad on it, too.
Another question that has been asked me, what does OMS stand for? Because we call that the OMS building. It stands for Operations Maintenance and Storage. OMS, Operations Maintenance and Storage. And they call them that because of a lot of times, the way they were built, the way they were paid for, you know, that was paid for, biggest part by the state, by state grant, and there was, I think, six years that we couldn't rent it or anything. We just couldn't put equipment in it. Now, that time is gone. We can do with it what we want. Well, let's see. What else do we have here? That's why I put that live in the OMS building. You know, when you're as young as we are, sometimes you forget things, and I don't recall anything else that I had to say. So, our airport manager, Robert, will fill you in on fuel and such.
And while we're at Airport Operators Meeting, I ran into Kendra Cross. She is the district supervisor for the U.S. Department of Agriculture.
Yeah.
She is an Animal and Plant Health Inspector, and she came out three years ago.
Three years.
Three years ago, and did some animal control for us, and they charged the county for it. It wasn't a whole bunch of money, but I asked her, "What are they charging now?" And she said that they have a contract with CDOT, and they don't charge anything to come out anymore.
Wow. Could be two of them.
Pardon me?
Yeah, we can afford that.
Yeah. That's why she said, "You can't beat the price." It bite me down.
But anyway, I'm going to give her a call around May someplace and see if I can get her out in June to do a little training for us on animal control.
Good. Excellent.
Also, in January, we sold 337 gallons of fuel. Has 813 this morning, 818, I'm sorry. We had 1,813 gallons of fuel in the tank.
Oops. Sorry.
That's a good question, Bob. If I may, please. A meeting, a couple of meetings ago, we authorized you to adjust the prices to be competitive.
Right.
Have you actually done that?
Yes.
Have you seen any difference in sales by doing that?
Well, actually, it's very unusual for us to sell that much fuel in January, because January's generally not good for flying. And so far this month, we've sold 141 gallons.
Wow. And it's only the...
So...
It's a little better than it was last year.
It's a lot better than it was last year.
Weather's been better, too.
The weather's been better, and our prices are...
Prices are more competitive now, and that's why.
Yes. The only place they can go to really save money is down to Walsenburg, and the cost of flying from Walsenburg to here...
You already burned it up.
Yeah.
I got it.
Yeah. So, anyway, we did find out early in the week that an anomaly occurred with our fuel system, and it's, since I've been on the board, and I've been on the board since 2011, I'd never seen this anomaly before. So, I went out and checked it, and sure enough, we do have an anomaly, and it has to do with the fuel handle, and we're in the process of getting that.
Working on it. I've got to ask this question. Does it have anything to do with Eaton sales?
Yes.
Have they been attentive to, first of all, is it, is it an issue that is their issue or is it our issue?
Their issue.
Have they been, have we contacted them?
No.
And have they been attentive?
No.
Okay. Will we plan on doing that?
That will be done today.
Just found out about it.
Thursday, Friday.
Thursday or Friday.
Please report back to us if there's any issues with Eaton's sales. We've been over backwards agreeing with them on their pricing. You know, we said, "Okay, we're gonna pay you." But if it's their problem, I'll speak for myself, but I suspect my comrades here will agree, we're gonna go after them heavily. Just let us know if there's any issue. I mean, if they're tenor, they fix it, no problem. Just let us know.
But anyway...
Thank you.
That's that.
Okay. Can we still sell fuel?
Yes, we can. We're still open for business.
Okay, good.
24/7. So that's good.
That's all I have. I have a question, if I may please. I hate to even bring this up, but seems like there's been going on forever. Is Dr. Smith's hangar fixed?
No.
We authorized it, we authorized the money.
The material is there. There was an issue. I haven't talked to Johnny lately. I'm not sure what the issue is. But him and what's the guy's name?
Yeah, the gentleman who worked for to do the work. Yeah, I don't remember his name.
Yeah, I talked to his significant other and apparently him and Johnny have got something at work because Johnny was gonna be out of town for a little while. And apparently, he's still out of town, so...
So if it's a process, I'm fine. I'm just concerned that this thing has gone off.
The material's been delivered. The work has been agreed to. Johnny and the guy that's gonna do the work have met. They're taking care of it.
Super. Thank you.
But we'll let you know when it's done.
Yes.
I'd really like to remove that from my Timbler file back there. That just keeps bugging me over and over. I mean, whatever. I'm glad it's a process, it looks like what you can hear. And he's on board.
Yes.
He's been an ace. I mean, he mentioned it to me a couple of times, but he was never ugly. You know, he just said, you know, "I'd really like to get it done." I said, "I agree with you." Let me kind of foster it off. So, good. I appreciate that a lot.
There was some discussion about cleaning up around a couple of the hangars. Any problems being made in that area, do you know?
Bill Geipel...
They have worked, yeah.
Yes, we're working on it. And I talked to Bill Geipel once. He's been, he works in South Korea. And he doesn't get back here very often, but we have discussed it with him and everybody agrees that some of that stuff needs to get cleaned up.
Okay, great. And I have a question I'd like to ask you as well. I know you have a video camera on the south side of that south hangar that can monitor the ramp. I wonder, thinking about your fuel cell sales, obviously, I think we can track use. Obviously, we've had some real estate transactions in the county and in Werfino County. And I wonder if we can tie increased fuel sales to use from the Navajos, use from the new buyers of...
The Navajos?
Navajo Nation, yeah.
I guess it would be Navajo, not Navahos.
Navajo Nation.
Yeah, Navajo Nation, yeah.
They just bought four new King Airs. And they are flying it in. I don't know how much fuel...
They're burning jet, their turbine.
They are burning jet fuel, which we do not have. That's something that I've been meaning to talk to our board about down the road. I think depending on how much traffic they do bring in here, I think that's something that we should...
We're watching to see how many turbine engines.
Yeah, that's, I guess, what we're getting at, is tracking that use to see. Not necessarily, I wouldn't be thinking about jet fuel, but where the increase in fuel sales is coming from.
They may even be willing to pay for us to put in a jet fuel dispenser for them as we expand our runway for another person. I mean, if they're willing to pay for it, I'd...
Yeah, they have enough traffic to justify this.
Exactly right. It's for their benefit. Unless you tell us that it's something we need for just general aviation, not just for a specific customer.
Yeah, and I'm tracking, trying to track all our traffic and find out how much jet... And I get calls quite often wanting to know if we do have jet. And I tell them, "No," but...
Tracking it's sometimes voluntary because the pump's set up so you put an in number in there and you can chase it back to a registration. But it's up to the pilot to put it in.
Correctly.
Let's get the fuel and go.
A lot of times they put in zeros or all ins or something.
Just to get through it.
Just to get through this.
There is a Citation 5 that comes and goes. I'm not sure where they come out of, Iowa, I think, maybe. But we see it here quite often. And then there's a, there's another jet. I don't remember now what it was. So as that kind of traffic comes around... If, yeah, if they would, and they buy lots of fuel. You know, where I go fly my Bonanza, I'll put in, you know, 20 bucks for a couple of hours of traveling. They'll put in 400 gallons. You know, then maybe burn it 75 gallons a side or more.
And Bill Geipel's...
Per engine, they got two engines.
Yeah, and Bill Geipel's got a jet.
He does. He's got a jet.
Yeah, it's worth chasing, talking about.
And talking about. And then I heard, or I saw, or I read where somebody, I suppose it was Jackie Hobby Planning Office, had looked to see how many homes are within the five-mile radius. And there was 352 or something like that, homes now within that radius. A lot of those people are, or thought they were interested in aviation. That's why they bought close to the airport.
Why is five miles significant?
Just to reuse.
It's an airport protection overlay. And the state helped us do that, like...
Good.
But it was to protect the airport from obstacles when they were starting to put up wind generators and cell towers. You know, there was a big boom in then. You know, and we've got a new tower in the county. I don't know if you know, it's over here by the gravel pit. And it's about 20 foot short of having a light on it. So we tell people, but it's not on the charts yet. So we tell people, beware if you're going over there and you're that low. It shouldn't be that low over there, but they could be. I've been over there that low.
Be 50 feet.
Looking for the town.
Wanted to be if you're not over top of something.
And it doesn't have a light on it, so at night you could run into it. But back to the traffic and stuff, you know? Every time, and some of you have heard me say this, if you've got, like Bill wants to build four hangars. Well, the taxes on those four hangars, which are the same size as the hangar I have in Lindley Green and Dock out of, that flies the Baron across the way from me, is about $400 tax. Well, it's $480 something dollars in tax. And then the lease payment's about 400. So that's about $800 that's coming money to the county. The airport doesn't get it all, of course, you know, the school and Fire District and everybody. But it goes to that general account. It goes to your general accountant. So you get four of those. Well, there's, what is that?
$3200.
And then you get, let's say there are 20 hangars out there and all of them are paying $800. And that's reasonable for a hangar tax. And, you know, you go to Denver or some other larger municipalities around the country, it's just almost unaffordable to have a hangar, unless it belongs to your corporation and you're writing off the expense.
Good. All right, gentlemen.
What else do we have? Any more questions? Anything we've made perfect? I confused all of my board now, then I'll go back and...
Great job.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for coming in. How was that for a short one?
Just tried.
See you later, Bob.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Senator.
Oh, yes, I missed one.
Hey, here's a quick note that we need afterwards because public health stuff to talk about. Something we talked about last name.
Who's the treasurer? Okay.
Jog your mind. I know you need to jog.
Your visiting the jail is the last thing we're doing today. Annual jail visit. Why don't you call me, Commissioner Panda, when you guys are through?
Okay.
Because I can't go on this tour.
Virginia, yeah, thank you. Bob? Bob? It says joint stars on the back of your jacket. Does that have anything to do with marijuana? Just checking.
Thank you, guys. See you.
See you, guys, thanks.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you today?
Thank you for coming in.
See ya. My head is good.
Okay, I had Decembers. Since we haven't seen it yet.
So is there a surprise that you're waiting to tell us?
No.
That's good news.
The numbers are what they are.
And it's what you expected.
Any questions?
Have I had a chance to review it? Get your book. Look, where does he have it? Sorry, standard may... An anomaly is unusual. No sign of it.
When do we start collecting on the school bond issue, just out of curiosity?
When?
Yeah.
Year? Since I've been working here.
No, I mean the new...
Oh, the new one, we already are.
That's what I was gonna say. It started the first of the month, or January.
The captain improvements was for... We've got $12,280 in December.
That was what?
Captain improvement.
What was it for?
Yeah, that's what I was asking. Was that from the landfill stuff? Do you know?
That's Morgana's area.
I only ask because Rusty came in and said that they got their loader back today. He failed to tell us that yesterday. He forgot about it. Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too, but I don't remember.
What was it?
That we accept the treasurer's report for January 1st through January 31st.
This is December's.
The second page of December.
Second, then. Corrects it.
Pretty true. That we accept the treasurer's report from December 1st through December 31st, 2017.
Been moved to accept the treasurer's report December 1st through December 31st, 2017. Hearing none, some vote on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posnay, motion carries. Report has been accepted. I will sign that.
This is the January, we'll need a coach.
Yep, January's ready for you to look at.
Need a motion. I'll move that we accept the treasurer's report for January, month of January, 2018.
Well, second that. Been moved and seconded to accept treasurer's report January 1st through January 31st, 2018. Discussion.
Just a quick question. This, Virginia and I, I'm pretty sure I know what it is. What's the auto tax? Various, it says.
That's from Kelly's office.
That's the...
S.O., yeah.
Normal, okay.
For any questions, comments? None proceed, vote on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posnay, motion carries. Not when it's been accepted.
Your reason.
And I will...
Well, I have one more.
Now it's gonna get hot.
Oh, no, no. This is just a report I'm supposed to show you and then I filed in Kelly's office. It's for my PT for the last quarter in '17. Since we didn't meet, you didn't get to see it, so I'll show it to you now and then I'll give it to Kelly.
Public trustee.
Not a big one.
Doris never even yet showed it to him. She just filed it with Debbie.
So that goes with your records, Kelly?
You don't need approval on that, do you? That's just a report.
Yeah, it's just, statute says you're supposed to look at it.
Thank you.
All right, ma'am. Anything else?
Thank you.
Appreciate the work for coming in.
Thank you very much.
There's a donut back there.
Oh, okay. Surprise everybody.
Do you want me to see if Kim and Services is available?
If he's available, sure. This is really his decision. I can get out.
I'm sorry.
It's all right. You can use your power.
No.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Since she's on the phone. Did you get one?
Is she around? Okay, so, yeah, but if she's not available, then we'll just wait. Okay, sounds good, thanks. She's in a meeting till 11:00.
Who's that?
Laura.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, uh...
Is Tim available, you think?
If Tim is available?
Which is too damn official.
No, I guess so. Worked very quickly, it's Monday.
Will there be a report from Public Health today?
Straight to voicemail.
Is there a report from Public Health today?
Let me call...
She's in a meeting right now.
Be here till 11:00.
No, Public Health was...
Alyssa. She's not supposed to be here till 10:00.
Till 10:00. And she knows when it's right.
You called on Nancy. I texted her, but I didn't hear about this.
That's a whole hour. How did we do that? Ahead of schedule. Something wrong with us.
It's just going too fast.
Hi, is Alyssa on her way over? Yes, please. If it's possible. Okay, thanks. Custer County Commissioner's office, this is Brenda. Yeah.
Sharon.
We're in a meeting right now.
On that airport repair job?
Okay.
Last I remember, he was held up from doing the work because he wasn't insured. Him being... Oh, for the hangar you're talking about? Yeah, I don't have any ideas. That would be a... I would think that would be the owner of the hangars. Concerns. Paying him? Or no, he was doing it for free.
He was volunteering.
He was volunteering, yeah. I was thinking it was your liability that was your concern. I can't speak to that.
No, it wasn't the agreement. It was just a volunteer, that he said he'd do the work. So it's not, the county doesn't have any liability for that.
I don't know, this live streaming is not working at...
Okay.
I think, yeah. CECOM has scheduled maintenance from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. or something like that. It's like around 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. instead, so...
That's an issue.
They're so great. So we're trying to do it on the CenturyLink Internet, which wasn't good before, so...
Not enough, not enough bump for it, huh?
Is audio working?
Hers is.
Yeah.
This isn't. It's not working at all. It's just spinning.
I just thought sometimes audio might connect, but very good.
No, it's all the same.
You can't get that to go out over the Wi-Fi somehow.
The Wi-Fi is down.
Oh. That is a problem.
Like it works for, it'll work for a couple of seconds and then they'll quit, so...
Did you get hold of Alyssa?
Um, I got a hold of Rhonda and Rhonda said that Alyssa is on her way.
Thank you.
I'm gonna forward to your email for Monday.
And ready to be know if the RISAs are planning on coming in today?
As far as I know, they aren't planning on being here. Yeah, I put them on today because they, I wanted them to come in yesterday, but they couldn't because they had a doctor appointment or something like that, so...
Did you give them a time?
Oh, I think I said 11:00.
Ben, is Rusty coming back, do you know?
I think so, yes.
Somebody bring the canasta deck.
Well, John, I'm glad you could see. Enjoy your day.
Thanks for coming.
Let me ask you old timers a question, I mean old timers just in the sense you've lived here a lot longer than everybody. Yeah, I'm the oldest one in the room so far. That, that issue that Silvercliff is dealing with about that tower and everything, that refer to Rosita Peak, is that different than I've heard of Lookout and I've heard of?
Gibbs or Hibbs?
Yeah, is that all the same one, at the end of Bunker Hill Road up there?
Yes.
I know.
Ken, yes?
Good morning.
How are you?
No way, we were gonna go into recess. Good morning, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you for coming.
Of course, sorry, um.
Well, no, no apology, Ross.
You waiting?
Our schedule is, uh, we gotta jump on it this morning.
That's fantastic, that one happens, right?
You seem like it, how are you?
I am good, how are you?
Good, doing well, yeah.
Okay.
So, health fair is the, the big agenda for us. So, health fair coming on April 7th. Still kinda working out like the exact logistics of what we would like for you all to do when you get there, but we'll. What?
Can we broke that news?
I know, you're already counted.
Do we, do we wear, bring stethoscopes?
Oh, you can if you want, I'll teach you how to use it. Do you, does it, do you, any of you have like a specific request of where you'd like to be?
Last year I was agreed on, I'll do anything in the world.
Okay, I think we kinda have that in mind for you too, still, again.
Because you know, I can't get in too much trouble with that.
Well.
Be nice.
That is debatable.
Give us something technical.
All right, so we'll let you know kind of, we'll be in, in contact with you.
If you need someone to run and bring water, I'll do that, I don't care what I need.
Awesome, thank you. So, like I said, we'll keep you updated on that, but the new and exciting thing about health fair this year is we're gonna have a kids, we're gonna be focusing somewhat on kids. So we're gonna have height, weight, and BMI, um, station, um, well, really those will be with the adult stuff, but we're gonna do vision and hearing screens for kiddos. Um, we're gonna have a dentist there that will actually be able to do fluoride treatments for kiddos, yeah.
Is that our new local dentist?
It is, yeah.
Kyle?
Well, his wife, I think, that is a technician, yeah, she'll be there, so. Let's see, there's, I don't know why I didn't bring those notes from that. There's something else for kiddos. Well, the other thing is that, just that the, um, Altitude Fitness is gonna have kind of a little space where parents can keep, leave their kids while they go get their blood drawn, because kids aren't allowed in the blood draw area. So it's not a babysitting service, it's not like leave your kids there all day, but it's, they can stay there, you can go get your blood drawn and then you have to get your kids.
Kinda make a comment, just so my colleagues know this, what happened last year. Last year, we were very backed up, excuse me, turn it off, we were very backed up at the health fair. Alyssa had just been hired, had not started working, I'm sorry to tell us, you're gonna be embarrassed. She walked in just as the soon-to-be health nurse of the county, looked around and saw this huge line for blood draws and other things. Went like this, rolled his sleeves up and says, "I'm going to work," and went in and for the rest of the day, did this, and I just wanna tell you, this is the quality of the individual we have here. I just wanted to thank you again for that.
Plus, I just kinda liked, you know, poke people.
You like to poke people out there.
I volunteered for that myself.
They wouldn't let you do it?
No, I know, I volunteered to, to draw blood for people.
Yeah, and they, they would, come on over, I'll teach you how to do it.
Okay, I can get even for all the times I've been poked.
Um, so we have ten positive cases of flu in Custer County. Nine type A, one type B, so. It's, it's just different strains and it's treated the same, it's transmissible, transmitted the same, it's the same amount of contagiousness.
Is it the stuff that's bad that we see on the news?
It's exactly the same. Yeah, so, not too late to get your flu shots, and, nope, I mean, because here's the thing, if you get your flu shot and you still get the flu or you get exposed to the flu, your symptoms are gonna be less, and the flu shot actually protects your heart and your gastro system. You already got yours.
No, I didn't.
You haven't gotten yours?
I don't get flu shots.
I will see you this afternoon in my office, sir.
Yes, sir.
What time can you do it, because I never got mine.
I do them whenever, honestly, walk in and I'll give you a flu shot, I'm not picky about it.
Promise me I'm not gonna get sick from the shot, because way back when, I would get a flu shot, then I'd be sick for three days, I figured, this is crazy, why am I doing that?
Well, you can be sick for three days, or you can be sick for three weeks, with a horrendous fever and be at home totally miserable. It is, it really is.
Worth doing.
It's worth doing, it knocks down your symptoms, it keeps your symptoms less, for a less period of time, and if you do get the flu, it protects your heart and all the things that could be a long-term issue. Okay, um, we, there is a possible whooping cough. In the Amish community. It's not eradicated because people choose not to vaccinate their children.
Is it in school or?
No, it's in the Amish community. Yeah, so, probably came from the, um, Delnor area, because they definitely have positive cases and that, like, family moved here from there. Subsequently, they're refusing to be tested and they're refusing treatment, so we'll see where that goes, so.
Because I see it, unfortunately I watch TV occasionally. So if it gets to the point where the child is in significant danger, and the parents refuse, do you have any policy about interfering through court intervention or anything like that, or do you just let it go? I mean, this is a terrible decision that you would have to make, and I just don't know.
It's a super sticky thing, the thing is, the courts aren't gonna really have any jurisdiction over it because it's a religious choice, and because of the separation of church and state, we have no. I mean, they could talk about, it's still their choice, it's still, and it's still their religious belief not to be inoculated.
There would be human services battle if they really decided they were.
It does become a protection, a child protection services situation, in which case they're still protected by their religious rights.
I was thinking maybe if the court forced, appointed a guardian or something, and the guardian said, "I used to serve the parent's power," which I can't really imagine, but.
Yeah, we dealt with this in Fort Morgan with the Somali population too. And it's a losing.
I'm not looking to create an issue, I'm just, I'm very, you know, I'm worried about kids.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely, as do I, so, the best thing to do is just educate, educate, educate on, you know, washing your hands, keeping them isolated so that it doesn't perpetuate, um, you know, and there is a lot of holistic things that they do that are pretty effective, really, I mean, I don't even know what they are, so I can't even advocate for them, but, you know. And, I mean, honestly, as a population, we've lived this long. There's, yeah. So, last thing I wanna talk about is I wrote in here that you're welcome to come to our site visits if you want to, it's very minimal, like, here's what we do, we tell them, I have one today at one o'clock, and then the other one is on, the epidemiology one is on March 26th at 10:00 AM.
Yeah, what does that mean?
So, it's, it's not even a state visit, it's a, the regional folks that help us out, which are tremendously helpful, um, come and they just make sure that my paperwork's in order, that we have our policies correct, that we have, um, you know, our, our emergency plan, today's emergency preparedness, um, so that I have my, my emergency operation plan in order, that we have, you know, we actually have an emergency operation plan, so. Pretty easy, they'll be here like thirty minutes.
So is there, is that like complying with some sort of vacation requirement?
It is part of our EPR, which is Emergency Preparedness Grant, yeah, so it's a deliverable for that.
Um, just perhaps something that came up yesterday, wrote, and I think they spoke to you, did Gary Hyde speak to you about the?
EED?
EED?
Oh.
Yeah, he was, um, thinking that he'd like to, I think that's obviously a great idea. Is that something like you helped us at a wetmore get a couple, is that something that your grant is still available to maybe?
It would be, well, we're in a different grant cycle now, so yeah, it should be totally fine. Yeah, yeah.
Did you speak to you about?
He did, yeah, and I didn't know, yeah, he, I mean, he just sort of like mentioned it literally at the grocery store in passing, so.
That's a meeting in mind.
So, I will, um, I'll get in touch with him and see what he wants, like how many he wants exactly, and.
Thank you.
And we'll just get it ordered and get it going.
What would the cost of those EED?
About five fifty for, for one, um, but that is all-inclusive too, like you get the pads, um, they do the maintain, the maintenance on it, you know, like, so then we have to check it once a month and just make sure that, and if anything, like if you actually have to use it, then the battery's void, um, so they send you a new battery, that kind of stuff, so. If the battery runs out because it's just old, so like in three years when the battery's expired, we have to purchase one, but if we use it.
He indicated he was looking for two specific, three each, so.
Which makes sense, so.
You check those once a month?
Mm-hmm.
So, does somebody check ours here?
I, I checked the ones in the, at the Wetmore Community Center.
I think Mike Helfen isn't checking the ones here.
Oh.
I think so, yeah.
He just recently ordered new batteries for the one here, or the ones here, didn't he? I kinda remember that.
Yeah, I remember something, like last fall or something.
Maybe I'm confused.
Yeah, the, the panic buttons, we've gotten new batteries.
I know Carmelaine checks one that's at school.
Let's, let's make sure that we have Mike checking it.
Yeah, because it would be really bad if we went to use one.
Don't follow up with Mike.
I think there's a little tag on them that has an inspection thing and whatnot.
Yeah, because I was thinking it was like once a year type deal, but.
I think we should try it on you to make sure it's working.
How about we try it on you?
Recharge.
Yeah, I'll talk to Mike.
Okay, I think that's all I.
We can buy an airplane tomorrow, and I'm worried about who's got the flu on the airplane.
Everyone. An airplane is like a Petri dish.
I know, and it was just, I'm reading a book now about the mole in their house, moving down a mansion, and it's behind the wall, and it's a mystery because I can't figure out what's killing them, and it was mole, and no one knew it.
Service and Medicare, Medicare paid for it, if I come over and do that.
Surprisingly, I am old enough to be on Medicare. I'll let you give him one, and if he lives through it, I'll do it.
All right, fair enough. Okay.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you, appreciate it, good to see you.
Yep, thanks.
Thanks.
Take care.
See you.
Thank you. No, I'll be there, well, the, those folks will be there from probably like one to two, so right after two would probably be a good idea.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Do you still have my kitties at your house? Are my, were they still there this morning?
Oh, one of them. I tried to catch them last night.
Tim is on the front.
Okay.
But I don't know, like, if that means.
Yeah, they're super sweet too, and they have other shots, they should be spreading like this around, but. Yeah, see you guys.
Ma'am?
You're already coughing.
See, I'm afraid, I'm already, my immune system's down, I'm gonna get this shot, I'm as sick as a dog. Although, dog's healthy, so.
Supposedly there are no live.
Supposedly?
In, yeah, in the flu shot, there's nothing.
No live action?
No live cultures.
I hear that, and I got this shot, I'm sick.
I've, I've had that shot every year, probably for the past fifteen years, and I've never gotten sick from it, and neither have I.
I've never had a flu shot and I don't get them.
Love to be troubled.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, you okay with giving that recess?
Yes.
Okay, uh, let's go into recess, ten oh six, for five minutes. Agenda is staff report from Veteran's Service Office, Mr. Tim.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, sir.
Morning.
Morning.
Do it again.
Good, how you doing? My report's pretty short today, so I'm trying to help you keep the momentum going.
You're the man, keep it up.
Here's the original.
Thank you, sir.
Here's a copy for you. A little working copy for you. Thank you. All right. I'll start off with the normal monthly report for the state, that's sent in every month, um, quick numbers, busy month, January's just been a busy month, so, uh, phone calls, sending phone calls, a hundred and four personal contacts, office visits, did two home visits. We've got a vet here in town in Silvercliff, goes contacted by the VA, I've gone and seen him numerous times, he's having more and more dementia, he's living by himself, uh, so the VA may have to initiate some legal, for protection purposes, because he refuses to leave the home, but he's a danger to himself currently, so, so, just letting you know and that.
Does the VA actually get involved in something like that?
Boy, it's last resort, they really, they, they always hope that at some point, family or someone will intervene and encourage him to go to the veterans home or something, but he has no family, um, he's by himself, and, matter of fact, uh, when I go to visit him, a lot of times I have to reintroduce myself every time, he doesn't recall, he says, "Oh, you're that VA guy, aren't you?" or something like that. The nurse just called me last week, said the last time she visited him, last week, he didn't remember, he said, "How come you haven't been there in like six months?" and she says, "It's been there a couple weeks ago," so, and, uh, and he's got some wound issues and just hygiene issues that can lead to some major medical issues if it's not taken care of soon, so. So they always contact me, let me know, be aware, and see if I can help in any way, and, uh, so, but, um, so it's last resort, I think, they do that, that is strictly for the safety of the veteran, so. The other thing is, then, if you look at the second page, Veteran Trust Fund requests for, come down to the end, we're almost out of money, we're waiting for the last installment to come in, so this last month, uh, January, that's how many vets we help, utilities, propane, so forth, um, this Friday, I'll talk about it in a minute, we do have a meeting with the grant administrator who's coming down Friday, um, the state has, is screening this program much tighter, uh, the money's getting tighter, um, the, the funding for this grant comes from the tobacco settlement from years ago, so every year, one percent of that settlement every year is set aside for this trust fund, this year was two hundred thousand less that they had to spread around, it's probably gonna drop again next year, they had a full audit December, and so they, uh, told us to make sure that we're inquiring about the need more than just the want, and, uh, so, so, um, there were, so there've been a few vets this year that we've had to turn down, uh, when they weren't happy about it, and they complained to Legion, Legion has initiated, they wanted some explanation, and so the state's getting involved to come down to explain a little bit more on that, so that'll be this Friday at ten thirty, uh, that'll be here, the state, state grant administrator and the director of the board that oversees the grant will be here for that, okay? And then the expenses on the third page, uh, monthly expenses, uh, breakdown, and then the very last page, I always put that extra page, shown from the database, the, uh, four forty-three, I highlighted, uh, each, we, at a ten, that's the first time coming in, this last month, so we continue to grow, and that's about the average seven to twelve per month is what seems to be the average new vets. so we continue to grow, and that's about the average seven to twelve per month is what seems to be the average new vets, and most of those are, some, most of those are vets who have moved here within the last six months, a few, a couple of those vets have been here quite a while, actually, and have never been to the office.
Is that just in here, or you, you do a lot of work with other areas?
Well, the vast majority of vets are from, from here, but I do have vets coming in from Fremont County, um, that'll, that'll continue to grow, just because Al's only part-time down there, um, and he doesn't have, he's not accredited, so he doesn't have access to VA system, he can't track their claims, there's a lot of things I can do that he can't do, um, so, especially with vets who have disability claims or appeals pending, eventually, uh, they hear they have access to the system, I can give them a little more insight of what's going on than Al can, so, so that's, uh, the big driving force behind that, okay? So that's the state report, any questions on that?
DIC, what, what is that?
DIC is death and indemnity compensation, that's survivor benefits for spouses, um, so if, if a veteran passes away and he was rated by the VA for service-connected disability, there's different varied qualifiers depending on how long he was rated, whether he's a hundred percent or not a hundred percent, but if they determine that it's a service-connected death, then the spouse is eligible for benefits, which includes a monthly compensation, roughly twelve to thirteen hundred dollars a month, um, if he's been rated a hundred percent for over ten years, they get an enhanced version, it's about fifteen something a month, plus they get CHV, VA benefits, CHV, then X, if they're on Medicare particularly, acts like a Medicare supplement for them, at no cost, and picks up all the duck bowls and twenty percent and so forth, so, uh, but that's strictly, uh, for service-connected.
So, I'm officially accept the January two thousand eighteen, uh, Veteran Services Office monthly report as submitted.
Hey, I'll second it.
You can be seconded, so, uh, sorry, to approve the VSO report, uh, discussion, but can you talk money on the VTF request? Can you, are you allowed to share with us what that total dollar is, and that's a monthly basis, correct?
Yeah, I don't have to break, uh, the, the beginning of the grant year, July, the VFW notified they were approved for forty thousand dollars, uh, we've spent over thirty, so.
For our county.
For our county, okay, for, for VFW, so, um, we're probably down to about six or seven, and this, we're, we have less than, we've, I know we've, they've spent over thirty thousand so far, so we're probably gonna have about six thousand on this last installment, uh, and that's probably the hardest about this grant program is, uh, they, when they, they notify in July, here's the amount of money you're gonna get, but then it's installment, so, so the problem is stop and go, stop and go, stop and go, sometimes it takes two weeks to get the next installment, sometimes it takes a month, um, we, um, we're at almost a month now, it's probably, we just got notified, probably be the first week of March for the next installment.
And that'll go through July, and then your fiscal year starts over.
Right, so the grant application deadline is one March, uh, Ivan and the VFW, Ivan Brooks already has the application in, and then they'll announce in July if, if they're approved, and if approved, then how much, we put a request in for a certain amount, sometimes we hit it, sometimes we don't get the full amount, so. And then usually, because the state is on, you know, the July is the fiscal year starts, and then at some point, usually August or September is when the first installment gets released, okay?
Does some of that VTF money go to Fremont County vets?
Well, if they come up here, yeah, if they come in, 'cause Cotopaxi, uh, primarily, we don't have, I don't, I don't, we haven't had anyone come up from Canyon City itself for money, um, that I'm aware of.
But the amount that's allocated, you just.
Yeah.
Custer County.
Well, it's, it's for any vet, any veteran in the state that comes to see us, but we have them sign a statement that they will not apply anywhere else in the state, so they're not allowed to come shop from county to county to county, so, um, the only thing, I, I think the American Legion of Florence, they got a small amount this year, but I don't think anyone in Canyon, either Legion or VFW down there, got any money this year, so, uh, the priority is to Custer County vets, but like you said, where we're at, with Cotopaxi, Texas Creek, you know, they consider themselves part of this community, really, a lot of them do, they come here for all their services and, and shop and everything else, so, 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 you know, it's not an option for us to say, "No, you're not eligible, 'cause you live in another county", but we do, we do have a statement where they sign, they will not then apply in another county, so, because that, that gets, that does get picked up, Gail, they, if they started seeing it, they will catch it up at the state level, so, every application we do, and the way this kind of works is we're, we're kind of, they come in, they see me, we do the pre-screen, what's the need, so on and so forth, and then Ivan, uh, issues check and so forth, but those applications still go through the state for final verification, and we did have one this year that the state contacted us back and said, "Oop, gotta go get that money back", they weren't, that was, um, the need, they didn't need it, they wanted it, they, something on the, the lecture bill triggered them to ask a question, they called the vet, um, and the vet said, "Hey, here's what I'm using, uh, it's kind of helped, part of the bill was for, it was expensive, the barn for the horses", so the state said, "Uh, you don't need it that much, then do you?", okay, long story, but anyways, so, so that's why, and so state is cracking down, and, and they're telling us, we have to ask a little more tougher questions, there's not a means test for it, but we will start asking, what is your monthly, annual income? Not as a means test, but as an indicator, so if a vet comes in, which I had recently, uh, quite, and this is not unusual, where do you live now, what's your monthly income? Nine hundred dollars a month, eleven hundred dollars a month, there's no question, they need help, okay? They come in, they say, "Hey, my, my household income is eighty thousand dollars a year", okay, now you're gonna have to write a statement, 'cause you could have all kinds of things going on and still have a need, but, but with that low income, you're gonna have to explain it more in detail, no.
And how do they verify their income to your office?
We don't, we don't do any verif- it's just gonna be, yep, it's just gonna be based on what they say, there is no requirement, there is no means test on this, um, so, um, but if we do somehow find out that they're claiming, the one, the thing about it is the ones that, that are telling me nine, eleven, twelve hundred dollars a month, I know, I mean, we, we just know, they've been around long enough, and, and we know.
Uh, obviously, the counties by statutory law are required to provide a Veteran's Service Office.
Yes.
In every county.
Yes.
Uh, I, I find it interesting that our county's providing services to other counties' veterans.
It's not unusual.
And you say that it can, you don't have the authority to turn down those requests for service from non-county veterans?
And, and if I was asked to, I would quit tomorrow.
Yeah.
So, that's just where I'm standing at, so, if that comes in, he has need, you know, I mean, we have transits that come through the area in the summer, not a lot, but once in a while, hey, where are you from, Texas, I'm just, I'm, I'm before work, and I'm here, they may be here for a couple weeks, if we can help, we, we usually don't have any funding, but I'll point them over to Care and Share, and we'll try to get them down to Mount Carmel and the Springs, if they need housing and those type of things, but, uh, we won't, you know, we aren't, you know, if a vet needs help, we're gonna help where we can, can't fix it all, uh, probably the biggest challenge up here is, uh, vets move up here without doing much research on services, uh, they get up here and then they find, "Oh crap, the closest VA is over an hour away, I need to go once a week", "Okay, okay, I need a ride", well, you know, what we got is the Rotary, and Rotary does what they can, you know, they do a good job of that, but, um, you know, I've had, I've seen that happen more than once, where the needs are pretty great, and they make a decision, I've, I've seen vets buy these small little whatevers, you know, off the internet, sight unseen, move in, and then they get here, that's happened, and then they get here and they're shocked that we don't have a clinic, a VA clinic here, okay? So, well, so, so we can't fix it all, they never will be able to, uh, we do what we can where we can, uh, my primary mission is to help them navigate through the VA system, that is my primary mission, um, the Veteran Trust Fund is something that the state provides, our office, in collaboration, it's a, it's a win-win situation by supporting that program, it brings the vets through my office, and some of these vets, the only time I see them is once a year, and they're staying pretty well out of sight most of the year, and then they'll come in, they get, you know, the three hundred dollars for their two cores of wood, or whatever, and that's my one chance once a year to kind of maintain that contact, so, so collaboratively, and, and we, it's gone so well the last couple of years, that the state, matter of fact, and Gail, if you want to be Gail, you're more welcome, come at ten thirty on Friday, um, she's the grant administrator, the way we're operating here is kind of how she would like to see the other counties operate the trust fund, to collaborate between the VSO office and the either Legion or the VFW, whoever's the nonprofit that's actually getting the funding, okay? So, so that's, it's kind of the model that she's really presenting to the board and to the rest of the counties as she travels through the state, so, um, any other questions on that?
We do have a motion.
Okay, uh, the only other thing I'm mentioning, uh, Homebase Primary Care Program, which I mentioned, uh, Rosemary, who's great, um, and this has been an education for me, 'cause my dad's been in the program for the last year and a half, uh, so I got a chance to learn a lot about that program, it's a program that if veterans are pretty much homebound, they can, uh, uh, they will come in and send a nurse practitioner in if they're within a mileage limitation, though, so we have some parts of the valley that qualify, some parts of the valley that don't, it's a sixty-mile limit from the clinic down in Pueblo, okay, uh, but my dad was, uh, who's now, they're, and we just moved him two weeks ago down to nursing home down in Hillibrand, my mom and dad are down there, but the care that he received from her, it saved us from going down the hill, getting his pain meds and all these things, probably saved us fifteen trips down the hill last year, easy, and then she helped refer him over to the hospice facility and so forth, and, uh, moved my mom and dad down to Hillibrand, and because the VA does cover hospice care, my dad's class at hospice, they are picking up the cost of my dad's care down in Hillibrand, so, 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 uh, that was an education for me, as far as that goes, um, so I just, one of those things, try to get out there, a lot of veterans, um, uh, you know, Anna and Joe Ordron, they moved to North Carolina this year, but Joe was on that program for a couple of years, and that really was a lifesaver for them as they were trying to determine what to do next, so, okay, um, April's coming up, right around the corner, um, annual training conference, uh, that's required that I attend, that is a state training conference, it'd be the, the week of April tenth through the thirteenth, and then the last thing, um, see, I'm, I'm, I am with Department of One, give you the personnel update, um, I went and had a scope done on the tent, I know, I think I've mentioned it most of the time, but I'll give you update, um, been doing a lot of testing consultations and so forth, did a CAT scan on Friday, got the results yesterday, and it's non-cancer, so, that's good, good news on that, but still gotta come out, um, I did a full stress test on Monday, I have to get, still clear for, for surgery, I might have two surgeries coming up, the twenty-first this month, it'll be the first one, is I've got an umbilical hernia that I put off, uh, until we knew what we were, prior was the tumor until we knew for sure, so now the tumor's benign, I can push that back a little bit, get the umbilical hernia fixed first, we should be on the twenty-first, I'll be out for a week to do that, and then we'll probably turn around the end of April and, uh, schedule the other surgery, so.
Good news?
Good news, so now I just have to go back, uh, Monday, we did all the cardiology, nuclear imaging, echocardiograms, and stress tests, the whole deal, took about five hours, so I have to go back for a consult, I had some other issues happening prior to finding out the tumor, um, had some blood pressure spiking issues, so doctor was concerned about that, so we'll go, uh, have to get cleared by cardiology before we do any surgery, so, that's the personnel update, that lets you know, so, all right?
Well, we have a motion before the board, uh, and that is to approve your report, uh, we're still in a period of discussion on that, I had asked last time that you correct, uh, my name, as the chairman of this, I see that's not happened, I will sign it today.
Chairman, I put chairman on there.
Yeah, no S on the flower.
Oh.
So, and secondly, then, I would request that we have a signature line on this page.
Separate, okay, okay.
You know, similar to this right here, we just scroll down and put a signature line in.
I'll, I'll check with the state, this is the state form, so I'll have to see, yeah, okay, that's.
I'll sign it today.
Okay.
Subsequent to this is not correct, then I probably will not sign it, I will postpone it until it's.
Okay.
Until it's correct, uh, all in, any further discussion? About the report here and then proceed to play with questions after. Okay, all in favor of approving the report from the VSO, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion, opposed, nay, motion carries, approved and accepted.
All you do now, if I can ask a question, I, I brought this up a while back, but it's always been a concern of mine, and the confidentiality, privacy, the physical space that your office is in, do you, do you feel it's adequate, or?
No, it's better than when I first started, uh, but it's not ideal, um, you know, um, if you're waiting at waiting area, if someone comes in, you can, you can hear most of my conversation outside. But it's, it's what I've been given, uh, when I first started, I made a proposal to separate, have separate entrance and separate those two areas out, and soundproof a wall separating the two areas, uh, was totally not possible, not feasible, not possible, due to numerous reasons, um, so, um, so we went to, 'cause the, the way the set was at first was even worse, because there was, the glass door was not there, so I had no, couldn't see what was coming or going, um, it was really totally dysfunctional, so, uh, due to, mostly it was private donations that, that helped make those renovations and so forth, um, my hope is still, uh, I'd like to find a different location, find some funding, whether it's grants, whatever, and purchase an, an actual separate location, uh, most times, because there's no meetings every day, but there's still traffic coming and going, uh, people have stores downstairs, and there's just people come and go, and as vets are waiting outside, I, it's not unusual where I'll have a vet come in after he's been waiting fifteen, twenty minutes, I heard you say, you know, can you tell me more about what you told that guy? You know, so, we're probably not gonna get to complain, as far as it goes, but, um, it's, it's where I've been placed, so.
Do you have, or are you tracking county versus non-county visits?
No, no, I, I can, if you'd like.
You know, my concern is this, Tim, that if, let's use the, the trust fund dollars, for example, uh, we run out of trust fund dollars, okay, I get that. I guess my question is, where's our allegiance, is it to our county vets first, because this is a county office, we're not funded to take care of other counties' veterans, so if our county veterans are denied services because we have graciously offered services to non-county vets, I, I think that puts us in an awkward position.
Well, let me check with Gail, Gail will be here Friday, I'll bring that question up to her.
I won't be able to go to that meeting, I'll be out of town.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll bring that up with her, um, because my understanding has been with this program that we, we, if a vet comes in and is in need, we're required to address that need with this, with this program, but at the same time, they are required to be notified, hey, if you're caught shopping around, not only will you, you'll, you'll be permanently banned from ever receiving, and it has happened in the past, last year they had an elderly couple, um, up in the Denver area, Bounce County County, and no one, no one even questioned them, because, you know, seventy-some-year-old silver gray-haired guy, you know, grand, looked like a grandfather, said he was a vet, and they found out, not only was he Bounce County County, never served a day.
Our county's funded, then, because the, you said Fremont County was part-time.
Yeah.
So, how do they, how, how, how do they allocate funds to?
Well.
Part-time dude.
Well, it's about, it's about half of what we're getting, as far, it's, it's cut back, so we're, we're at nineteen fifty a month, so they're getting about half.
So they got twice as many vets.
Oh, more than that.
That doesn't.
They have more than that.
Add them.
No, and that's a decision, uh, for the county commissioners, they get the decision, but a lot of that has to do with the VSO to decide, to kind of push that issue, when I started, I was part-time, first thirty days in, I, I presented to commissioners, there's no way to do this job right on a part-time basis, even though our numbers are smaller, if you're trying to provide, especially, the, the, the time-consuming part of my job is in the service-connected disability claims.
Might be something to talk about, the four counties and that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean.
Lost.
We're spending dollars to fund our VSO office on a full-time condition, now we're starting to service their people, they're never gonna go.
It's not that much, has a history of putting all to the other counties, their expenses.
And the good news is, um, because of what's happened here, we're from a county that just went full-time, they just went to thirty-five hours in the last month, uh, they'd been eight hours a week, and, and so, uh, they had a new commissioner come in down there, who's not a vet, but he was kind of curious about the program, we had some folks from here who joined the Legion down there, and they started talking about, "Hey, VSO office up there, we're full-time, you actually got about as many vets", and it started a conversation, the commissioner looked into it, he contacted the state, said, "What do we have to do to go full-time?", and he did, and that's what needs happening.
Well, I think if we're servicing non-county vets.
We ought to be compensated.
We should be compensated, certainly, we should have an intergovernmental agreement.
Put that open to cannon worms, because it, it happens all over, you got Pueblo vets go to the Springs, Springs vets go to Denver, uh, I mean, you, it's just, it just happens.
That's okay, then, you know, then you look at traffic flow and you fund it accordingly, that, I can understand, and you, you can't limit the guys, that's okay.
No.
But you sure can share the funding.
Well, I think, remember, three years ago I started, the state was giving a hundred dollars a month to the county, that was two hundred for full-time, so it's only the last three years that they come up with any funding at all, so, so this is still fairly new, um, and I know that it wasn't for that state funding.
We're talking about other money.
Yeah, yeah, right, but, but that was the funding that allowed me to go full-time, it just, it happened that when I got hired, April fifteenth, went to the state conference, ended the month, they announced the funding, and I brought my present to the county, and then by August, without that funding, I'd probably still be sitting there. that funding, I'd probably still be sitting there part-time.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I would like under your office visits to, uh, break that out into county and non-county visits.
Okay, I can see it.
I'm not trying to hang anybody, and it's not an issue now, but that doesn't mean it wouldn't have the potential to become an issue where we just cannot afford to service our own vets when our adjoining counties are not doing their job. It's not that I think you're doing something you shouldn't be, uh, but other counties need to step up and do their job, and I'm thinking primarily of Fremont County.
Yeah, um, yeah, the Chota Pax area will always come here, that's just more convenient, so that's gonna be part of it, but, uh, but I do have a few that, um, I've got a peel I'm working on, I got a couple from in-town Canyon City where it come up.
Well, maybe as a board, we need to, uh, have some communication with at least Fremont County, Board of County Commissioners, because just because they're doing it doesn't mean it's right. It doesn't mean they'll continue to be right.
My, yeah, my opinion, easily, um, they, they, my opinion, this is my opinion, but they should be a full-time VSO probably with an admin assistant down there, because if the word got out that they were accredited, had full access, and they also did some, got stuff in the paper and actually started doing some, some outreach, that office would go over.
And I think it's probably incumbent upon us to carry that message to them, because it's impacting our county, it may not be huge right now, but it could be, so, alright.
Okay, alright.
Thank you, Tim.
No problem, good to see you.
Glad to see you, take care, put in the family.
Glad to hear the news.
Yep, consult with the cardiologist, so.
And they talked about, uh, ladies were gonna paint that wall over there, you know, if that's still in the works or?
Yeah, um, yeah, my, okay.
Cause I told our maintenance person that that was probably gonna be done by.
Yeah, yeah, if it's, if it's ready to go, I was just waiting for the word that is.
I believe it is.
Figured out, cleared for takeoff, because we've got some paint left over. Yeah, that's what they told me, to get some extra paint.
Alright, thank you, sir, have a great day.
You too.
Are you the Rice's? Okay, um, gentlemen, public health is scheduled, or, sorry, uh, human services is scheduled at 11:00, are you okay with moving our new business item up?
Yep.
Uh, do you know that now, or?
Of course.
So why don't we, tell you what, why don't we table our staff reports and we'll move into new business, is that fair enough?
That's good.
Okay, very good, welcome.
Thank you.
We say, John, haven't seen you forever.
My lord.
Good to see you.
I've been.
Good. You've been busy.
Been a long time.
Yes, it has, I'll tell you, it has.
John, I'm Tom Flower.
I met you once when Gary and I parked our machines out there.
Okay, yes, yes, I remember.
Linda Rice.
Hi, Linda.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. And this is our attorney, county attorney, you have not met Clint Smith. Have a seat, Mr. Rice. John and Linda Rice, and Kelly's got another chair for you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Get to sit in the inquisitor seat.
Well, I'm glad he's in that one, I'm in there.
He's in the formal one.
That's the notch on the seat. Yeah, exactly, that's what I was thinking.
Well, there's no electric wires going to this, I'll sit down.
That's right, that's right.
Well, it's not electric wires, it's injection.
And where are you folks live?
Pueblo.
In Pueblo?
Yeah.
Are you related to the Rice's up here?
Yeah, born and raised up here. I was born and raised up here.
Went to school with him back in the olden days.
Yeah.
Literally, he looks much younger.
That's always my problem.
Well, I kind of put this together, um, the front is pretty much, um, kind of what I emailed, and, um, then at the bottom is, um, I guess basically our agenda today to discuss if there is a, a need what we considered you might have.
You might describe to everybody where this is, I know where it is.
I guess they have maps here.
Yeah, there's, there should be a map in that packet there that shows exactly, because where your landfill and the gravel pits at right now, it goes directly south, through down to Ulmer Gulch.
So, it's basically this square, I guess it is at the, yeah, it's at the back.
Easier to see right there, because this here shows the.
Current.
Yeah, your land, your landfill, your gravel pit, uh, green leaf, sawmill, and this is the property right here.
So, what we had thought is if the county only needed 80, we would do that, but if you wanted the whole 160, it's that whole square. There's an additional part over here that we could do also, we just don't know.
This is your place here too, or, or just the here?
Just everything in that dark.
Right, within the dark, yeah.
Everything in the dark.
It's ours.
We just kind of did the box to show what we were presenting to you, not knowing what your needs would be, that's directly adjacent to what you currently have, but everything clear over here inside those dark boxes is what we own. So it's a total of like 660-some total acres, but there'd be 400 available.
Just 160 plus whatever.
Yeah, if you want more than 160, then we'd have to come this way with it. But, uh, I wasn't sure how much of it you want, we'd want, and it was appraised at 1,000 an acre, all of it, yeah, all the dry land.
Even down here.
Yeah, the whole thing, it was appraised at 1,000 an acre. Uh, we know there should be the same amount of gravel under here as what you've got here, but.
Probably more.
If you guys, yeah, because that big old hill's right here, along that fence, and if you guys want to go in there with a backhoe and dig test holes, as long as you cover them back up after you dig them, I don't care.
You could just take the fence down, that's already.
Well, there should, there should be a gate right here.
Oh, that's right, you said that.
There should be a gate right here, it's an old one, I'm sure it's, it could be wired completely shut, I don't know, but, anyway, you want to go to get in there and just, if you want to go in there with a backhoe and dig it and see what.
Sure. You mentioned a right-of-way you might consider, John, where, where would you do it?
If you could come and bring it into here, somewhere along your west boundary.
That's our preference.
With green leaf, if you just cut us a, a road off of here, if you could cut us a road and give us access, an easement into the backside of the property here.
Trade it somehow.
We would cut that down to 900 an acre, which I think is pretty fair, that'd give you.
And where's your access to this large piece of property now?
It comes off here, comes off 69 here, and comes up the hill.
So if we were to take more of it out of here, that's another reason you'd want a right-of-way.
Right.
And is this property currently listed?
No.
For sale?
Nope.
We're presenting it to you before we do that.
You think we got a lot of trash up here, do you?
Well, we were just, you know, I, I know down in Pueblo that, boy, just.
Commodity, that's for sure.
Oh, yeah, their landfills just grow like crazy.
We're using this one quicker than we thought, too.
Where is proceed to where I'm going?
On the, right here, Jay, on this edge.
Very tall, yeah.
Ah, okay. Let's go to the other side, I'll get help with you, thank you.
The map, we actually had a surveyor look at this, and he actually drew this map for us, though it wasn't something we did, but to copy it, it would come out dark, but that is part of the, the road, just the edge of it, this.
Yeah, you can see the edge, there's the other.
Too south of the current.
Kind of dip right in here.
I have the map upside down, sorry.
Yeah, he's got, lucky you're sitting in the right place, because you got it oriented the, the way it is, right?
Yeah, right.
Green leaf forestry product.
I got it, here's landfill, here's the property, I got it. And we own the property to the east of the landfill also.
Oh, do you?
Yeah. So that's expandable if we need it.
And then, do you know who owns this property?
I'm not sure who's got that. Uh, you know, John Rusher for a while was putting his cattle on there, but.
Leasing it.
A lot of them, uh, his cattle got anywhere, anything.
He'd probably know, but.
Yeah, he might know, but I'm not really sure who owns this one.
I don't know anything about the permitting process for expansion of the landfill, there has to be a joint landowner, uh, I just don't know that, so.
We, we broached that subject multiple times in the past, and the process of, of expanding what is currently a landfill is a significant process, is EPA, I mean, it's, it's a multi-year process, and that's why I've always been concerned, we need to start now, because we're gonna run out of landfill.
That's right.
The next few years.
So, this is 160 acres?
Yes, that's that, the, cause I asked the surveyor and he said, well, that should be, according to the marks, he said that should be 160. He didn't survey it to make sure it's, plus or minus 160.
And, and if I understood you correct, if, if we provided a, an easement, uh, from the county road down.
Yes.
Then you would deduct some off of your asking.
100 bucks an acre.
Yeah, 100 an acre.
How, this is not, I'm not trying to wheel and deal or anything, John, how flexible are you guys, because you heard they say it's gonna take some time.
Right.
Uh, and, uh, how quickly are you trying to turn this, I mean?
Fairly quickly, yeah. If, uh, if you guys want it, I don't know if you would be just purchasing it outright or want to make payments or?
Well, that's, that's another piece, and that's gonna be discussed later, but how flexible are you on that? I mean, that's an income, uh, loan or whatever.
Right.
How are you?
Well, the only thing we figured is if you could pay it off in two years, if that would be a possibility, I don't know what your finances are.
You know how poor Custer County is.
I think you should donate it to the county.
Well, I guess we're done.
I did say we weren't trying to wheel and deal, so.
No, we just give us the damn thing, walk out the door.
I think it's nice that you took the time to consider taking it to us before you put it on the, on the market.
Yeah.
It's a good thing, given its location.
Yeah, we didn't know, like, John and I had kind of discussed where you had mentioned financing when you had called in the other day, we didn't know, like, if you're interested in more than the 80 acres, that's the minimum we would sell, was 80 acres, we won't sell less than that.
We, we want a long-range plan as much as we can, and if there were as much as we can afford.
Right.
So we'll have to look at it, time to think about.
More than you're also.
Yeah.
And that would be ideal for you guys, just to be able to go, you know, take the fence down and just keep going south.
Mm-hmm.
Because this here is all brand-new fence along this east side here, because Dad had, they hadn't moved it, oh, 15 years ago or so, they moved it back a quarter, Denver a quarter mile, because the fence wasn't right, so.
They never are.
No.
Is the land used for anything now other than grazing?
Just grazing cattle, yeah, there's nothing else.
Got leased on it.
Are there any wells or anything on it?
There's not on this piece here, uh-uh, there, there, the only well on the whole property is over here.
And you're not aware of any, um, easements that are currently restricted to use of the property?
Shouldn't be.
No.
Uh-uh, because there's, there's one that came in here years ago on this, down here where it come out of the old gravel pit, and went right up along the top of that bluff and came up to about, uh, right here, but we don't know if this easement here is even usable now.
Yeah, and it's on this other map, that easement John's talking about, it's, it's on that.
It's not on a deed?
No.
It's not on a deed, but we can, but we found, because, uh, you know, that road shows it comes right here.
That may have been the old highway.
Yeah, and they came, came up into here, and that's what Dad tried to do when he was a commissioner, he wanted them to take the, the highway and put it up on top of the bluff and get it out of down here in the bottom anyway, but they.
Would have been nice for cellphone coverage.
Yeah.
You would ask about lease, it's not under a current lease, but John has been working with the same people for.
Year to year.
Yeah.
All of them, and I, and last year I didn't lease it to him, because, uh, his cows had taken it down quite a bit, and he was really good about pulling a bunch of them out of there, so last year it just sat and rested, so it's got some good gas on it right now, so.
There's Mr. Landfill in the back, have you met Rusty?
Hi, thank you.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Hi, Linda Rice.
Hi.
John Rice.
Come here, John, Rusty, and take a look at the chart.
All of this property's for sale, uh, obviously our, our property's right here, this 160 acre south, there's another map in front of this, if you want to look at that.
He's looking at an easement coming off the county road to get in here, keep some of this and drive in there and trade 100 bucks off on acre on that.
A lot of wildlife hangs out in there.
Are you gonna get your rifle out?
You're antelope country and all that.
Yeah, yes, it is.
There was no cattle in there last year, so I just went ahead and turned the tank on anyway.
That's why it's grazed down on the antelope road.
There was no danger, so they just came and multiplied.
Yeah, we gotta figure it out, figure out what we're, our plan is.
Right.
Really appreciate you taking the time.
I'm sure, because, yeah, like I say, if that, if that easement would come into right here, anyplace on this piece here, right here close.
And that would be a DED easement in the event you sold this property later on.
Yes.
Yes.
That's just fenced on the east side, right?
Yeah, the fence, the fence comes in here off the pit.
Yeah.
Is that you, Linda?
That's me, yeah, your purse.
Tell your purse to be quiet.
Yes, exactly, I forgot to shut the locker, leaving it in the drawer.
Rusty, do you know how much land the county owns east of the landfill?
How many acres east of the landfill do we have?
Do we own? If, if you don't know, that's fine, I just thought maybe you know, I'll tell you how. That's fine.
Timing-wise too, was a question, Rusty.
Actually, Syford's Hall Road is on county property, so they go through, gave them an easement, I guess, a year and a half anyway, they go right to their pit from 328.
Alright, that's the one that goes in about 300 yards, and I got the gate there?
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you, folks, appreciate it. Um, we're actually, we have a landfill workshop scheduled, uh, at the end of May.
28?
Yeah, 27.
27?
28.
28, that's, uh.
Oh, it's after our meeting, that's right, it's not the day before, so, uh, yeah, we could certainly have some further discussion.
Okay.
At that time, and, uh.
Thank you for doing this.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Oh, sure. You're welcome. I wanted to try to put some other things, I know they're not selling comparables, but at least there are some comparables, so you know.
There's comps around, I'm sure.
That we're not, we're not overpricing it for sure, and the appraisal was at the first 1,000.
Well, you don't want to take a bath on it.
No.
Neither do we.
Exactly.
Well, thank you for coming up, appreciate you traveling up here to see us. Thank you, it'd be nice to meet you.
See ya, John.
Been a long time since the Hall of Thieves for your dad went on.
Yeah, that's true, that's been forty years ago, probably.
You're welcome.
Fifty years ago.
Yeah, it is.
Alright, thanks, guys.
See ya.
So, nice meeting you too.
Our chairperson. The literal chairperson. The bigoted chairperson.
While we're waiting, just for the sake of time, if you gentlemen, you don't mind, I'd like to share with you another situation I ran into. I don't know what, what the deal is, but I would like for us to pursue, at least to get some information, and that concerns our clinic. I had made an doctor's appointment with the eye doctor who comes up here frequently and sees patients and had an appointment and went over and was there for my appointment and explained to them that, of course, I asked for insurance. And I said, "I was on county insurance," and they promptly informed me they don't take
They don't take it.
county insurance for vision. And I struggle with that, as a citizen, I really struggle with that, and as a county commissioner, I'm somewhat was taken aback by that whole thing. If our own clinic does not accept our own county insurance, I think we need to have a conversation with their administrator, would you?
I agree.
Do you have other thoughts about that?
I think we should invite him, next meeting's down in Whitmore, but maybe the end of the month, let's invite him in here and let's ask that question.
Are you talking about the vision?
Yeah.
I, I don't know, we've got something between Claflin and the clinic that needs to be worked out.
Yeah, Dr. Claflin was aware of that, but he certainly couldn't address the issues, and I have no idea why they don't do that, so...
Adjust vision?
Adjust vision is my understanding. Now, obviously, I haven't gone to our local, new local dentist, but I'm assuming he probably does honor our insurance. But medical, they, they honor medical insurance, just vision.
It might, it might be that they just don't want to do Claflin's work for him.
Yeah, well, they're doing everybody else's insurance work for the other, I don't know, but I'd like to have that conversation and if we can, extend that invitation to their director at our march.
Does the dentist up here take insurance?
I didn't, I didn't even know there was a dentist here.
Part-time.
Is it just new?
Kyle Schultz?
Kyle, yeah.
I think we've already talked about that and he does.
So, anyway, just was a topic that I wanted to bring up while we were waiting for this young lady.
Well, no, that's okay, I just wanna, I just wanna say on this Claflin thing, I think it's, um, that Brenda's right, the clinic does not wanna have to bill...
Be the administrator for it.
Bill the insurance for that, and Dr. Hunter, who comes up or used to come up part-time from Salida, who was an orthoped, and when I went to see him at the clinic, he had a person there that took my information for me and billed it through their office. Not through the clinic. Okay, so I don't know if that's something that's going on with Claflin because, you know, it's not really the clinic's job to bill for Claflin, and maybe that's why they don't wanna do it.
It's county service.
I don't, I don't know.
I getcha, I have some concerns.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but I just wanted to fill you in on how it worked with Dr. Hunter, because they didn't bill it either. The gal took my insurance, she made me fill out a form from Dr. Hunter's office, and then they billed it themselves.
Yeah.
I don't know, but...
I don't either, that's why I wanna have a conversation, I mean, I know they bill other insurances, so whether they want to or don't want to or whatever, I guess that's up to discussion.
Yeah, but they bill other insurance for services that the clinic does, not for, for an outside contractor.
If they're not willing to do that, then I would question why we would have him up here.
Well, that's, that's a good point.
I just, they have a full-time person they paid to be billing.
He couldn't have you contact his office in Canyon and give him your information and they bill it.
Do it the same way.
Yeah, I don't know why they wouldn't do that, that'd be so...
I think we should ask that question.
But, yeah, I think those are... Welcome, how are you?
Okay.
You are actually the only one that's been on schedule.
Well, yeah, but you called and I was at another meeting, because I told Brenda I won't be back until eleven.
We've been ahead of schedule all morning.
Look at you go here.
Actually, we're ahead because we did rice.
That's true, yeah. But on our staff reports, we've been
Oh, on your, okay.
early all morning, so you're the only one that is actually
Yeah.
in our time slot.
And I could've come earlier, but I wasn't here because I was at my other meeting, so we're okay.
Well, thank you for being here.
Oh, it's my pleasure. Yeah, my pleasure.
That's what we like to hear.
And not really, but no, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. Yeah, and since we didn't meet in November, I mean, in January, I had Brenda send you the November confusing report and then here, and then she sent you the December confusing report, correct? Okay.
Yes.
And one of the things, and it's hard to see on the report, but in November was our first, I just...
Okay, I've got six or seven different documents, so...
Oh, yes, you do.
So, we need to see which one you are talking about.
Oh, right now, I was just gonna tell you something that you don't even know.
Oh, okay, alright.
Okay, and we have our LEAP program, which is, starts November first and it runs through April. And we start taking payroll, I mean, applications for that in October, and that, and the end of November will be the actual first payroll by now, and we had a hundred and twenty-seven people that received payments from forty-one thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-two cents.
And that's Energy Assistance Program?
Yeah, that's the LEAP program, so I just wanted to let you know that, yeah, we, we had a lot of people that were on that first payroll because we really tried hard to get everybody on that first payroll, so...
The amount again, I'm sorry?
Forty-one thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-two cents, don't forget that seventy-two cents.
Yeah, and how many people?
I don't know how many people, that's households.
Oh, no, that's what I meant.
House, households, a hundred and twenty-seven.
Hundred and twenty-seven, thank you.
Hundred and twenty-seven households for that one. Now, the, the next ones you'll see are not that big because that's our big rush, but we do about two hundred and some households in that time period from November to April.
Is it different then, much, is it the same?
It's, it, it varies, you know, I'd have to go back and see what we've done in previous years, but it runs about two hundred households for that time period, which is quite a few, actually. You know, we haven't been hit as hard as some years for emergency services because it hasn't been snowy and cold and you're not seeing the very high electric bills and stuff, but we do still have our energy outreach money and I've got a little bit of community service block grant money, so we're, we're doing fine. Okay, so, back to this lovely thing.
What's the title of it?
It's just called the expenditure and unexpended balance, and it's very confusing, and now, so I'm going to work on this form before, starting next month, which would be the actual January, but if you look at it, we were fine on all of our monies, we didn't overspend anything, okay, so that's all, everything's fine. So, you don't have to try to figure that out, I just wanted to let you know on that. And I have to talk to... I know, it's very confusing. It's very confusing, and that's why I'm just telling you everything is fine.
Everything's okay.
And you don't need to worry about it. Although we did get a weird thing yesterday, I got a ten ninety-nine miscellaneous from the... Because we don't file income tax, so I'm like, why am I getting this? And it came from Healthcare Policy and Finance, which does our Medicaid. And it was for twenty-one thousand dollars, it says this is, you know, and we're like, what is this? And I still am not sure, but I have a meeting next week and I'm gonna find out, but what we think it is is we reimburse, people come in, if they're on Medicaid, we can do Medicaid transportation. We fill out a form, they go to the doctor, we reimburse them for travel, and then we submit that to Healthcare Policy and Finance. So, we're thinking maybe that's why we're getting that, we've been doing this program for years, and this is the first year we ever got a ten ninety-nine miscellaneous. And so, we've been, we went back through and added up the amount of money that we, you know, that we pay, not we, but Healthcare Policy and Finance, and it came out, I added up like nineteen thousand or something, and then Rhonda was gonna do it again, and so, I don't know, but we didn't come up with the number that they say is on that thing, so it's a little weird to me, never had that before, but we'll be finding out why we got that, because I, we don't file income tax, why would we get that?
I hope they're not expecting you to allocate it back to the people who got Medicaid.
Well, no, because it's not broke out, we wouldn't be able to know that, yeah.
I mean, I was the only thing, I'm thinking, why would they send it to the municipality?
Why would they send, why would they send that to them, it made absolutely no sense. And I'm like, I don't know, so, at my meeting that I'm gonna be at, the representative from Medicaid will be there. So, I'm gonna ask him, what in the world is this about? Craziest one ever saw. And, yeah, and then, this one here is our community service block app that I was just talking about, and it just shows our expenditures and we're fine on that. And this is our Energy Outreach Colorado, and same thing, this is just a grant and we're good on that. And then Ron always sends the stuff about food assistance, how many we had in one month. And it's just information and stuff, so you probably don't even want half of this stuff, and that's okay with me, we don't wanna have this stuff.
Well, we've got it electronically, so, good.
I actually compare these month to month, just to see if they're, you know, what I consider anomalies.
Yeah, okay, okay.
That's just me, so I, I like to get them.
Okay, that's fine, I don't have problems sending them at all, so I...
And I'm saying the truth, most of them, I said, they go, gosh, I don't know what the heck this is for, I mean, to be really truthful with you.
Yeah, right, this, you know, like the food stamps just shows, it just shows a chart of how, you know, what the benefits, just a graph on that, you know, how these things go. And Tom had gotten, received an email from food assistance about filling out a questionnaire, and he says, "Do I need to fill this out?" And I said, "No, I'm gonna fill it out." And what that's about, and it's not only food assistance, but what that's about, and he was gonna go to CCI, did you go to CCI? Did they mention anything?
No.
No, okay. Well, what this is about is they're talking about increasing the poverty guideline for the food assistance because they felt like some of the people that were being denied because their income was over still need the help, so they were talking about doing that, that was part of it. The concern is that the counties have is that if we increase the number, you know, if more people are eligible, then our workload goes up, and if our workload goes out, that means we have to hire more help, and if we have to hire more help, they need to give us more money to do that, and, because we get...
We need to buy a bigger building.
And, and that was brought up by other, other department, you know, other counties too, that if we keep adding, then we're gonna have to have, Public County just moved into a new building and he's already saying, you know, if they do this, it's gonna increase our caseload more, and I'm already even in the new building, I'm busting at the seams. So, that's still a debate on what they're gonna do with that. The other thing is TANF, or Temporary Assistance for Needy Families, we get an allocation for that. And the amount of money that households gets is low, like if it's a single mom with one child, they only get three hundred and sixty-four dollars a month. That's all they get. So, they're talking about raising that guideline, not guideline, but raising the amount that we would give them. Our concern about that again is that we receive an allocation, and if you don't raise that allocation, then where's that money gonna come from? So, we have reserves, each county, we can keep a certain amount of money, if we don't use all of our TANF allocation this year, we can carry it over, just in case something happens next year. And so, you know, they're going, "Well, you can dip in your reserves," well, we can't dip in them like us, we have a cap. We can only carry over a hundred thousand, instead we're going, you know, we don't know that this is a good idea because you're gonna put a strain on, on this, and some counties are already dipping into their reserves, they don't have enough money, then if somebody has reserves, they'll contact another county and say, "Can I buy some TANF free from you?" You know, and so, that's a concern, so that's what that's all about, they're still negotiating that.
Yeah, there's legislation on the floor about the whole state TANF reserve.
Yep, oh, yep.
And so...
Yeah, and some of the counties that have had, like El Paso and the one on the, on the other side of that, where they've had some severe wildfires, they had to use some of their TANF reserves to handle those wildfires. And, you know, she goes, "If that happens again and they take our reserves, we don't have them, we're in, we're in deep trouble." So, they need to raise that allocation, so I don't know what they're gonna do with it. Yeah, so, that's about the biggest thing we have going on right now, so...
Can I ask you a question after my name, please?
Uh-huh.
I'm looking at the allocation we get for daycare, and I don't think we have many daycare facilities.
No, we just don't.
What is them, how does that work, I mean, if we don't have a facility for daycare, is it just we pay people to come into someone's home and watch their kid?
Right, we have licensed daycares, we have two licensed daycares. And so, we do, we pay, we, they have to apply, we have to determine eligibility, and then we determine how much, everybody has to pay a certain amount, okay, but then we'll pick up the remainder. So, let's say, I don't know, their parental fee is a hundred dollars, but daycare for that month is three hundred dollars. They pay the hundred, we pay the two hundred, and that's how it works. But they have to be income-eligible, and, and then the amount of fee is determined by how many in the household, what their income is, and that type of stuff, so that's how that works.
I was just curious.
Yeah. Yep, that's, that's how that one works.
Okay, so let me ask a question, I ask every single month, any anomalies, anything going on that we don't know about? I mean, because I really truly have a hard time.
Oh, I totally understand, that's why I'm telling you, we're good to go.
Okay, that's all I care about.
We're, we're good to go, we were under budget and everything was fine, and so...
Good report.
So, everything's okay right now, we made it through December, which is our October, November, and December, and December was horrible because they do the social security update, because everybody got a little two percent or three percent or what, it was two percent this year. So, anybody that we have on social security, when that goes up, it's supposed to hit our system, social security's supposed to link with our system, and it's supposed to automatically update in our system. It, and there's times if somebody has VA or some other thing that it does not, and we always get an exception report. And I used to get one, and you'd have to manually go in and calculate it and manually have to fix it. And we used to get them, and there would be six or seven on there, this year it was crazy. I had over fifty large counties, El Paso County had like ten thousand on there. And so, they are trying to figure out why these, these interfaces aren't working better. Yeah, because it's causing way too much time. And part of the problem is now with the Obamacare and stuff, we have a lot more people on Medicaid. And, and so, it's also not only looking like food assistance or financial assistance that we have on, it's looking at all those Medicaid cases that for some reason it's not updating. And it, yeah, and between us trying to clean up all those call mass changes, and the problem is we only have until the eighteenth of the month to do that, because that's when there, our system calculates the benefits for the next month. And if it's not correct, then for like food assistance or if it's a financial, it will set up an overpayment, and then there's claims out there, and so then people have to do all of this. So, we have to make sure that we get that done by that time period. And this year, we didn't even get the reception report, and I don't know, till like the ninth or something, and then we only had a few days to get that report cleared, get all of those updates into the computer and done. But we did it, we were looking at that, and they sent one out, and I looked at it and I said, "She's a med only and it doesn't matter because it's a small amount," but, yeah, we are complaining about that too, that interface should be working more. We should not be having to clear that many cases. That's just, it's just crazy, but...
How's your damn thing, are you okay with that in the moment?
We're okay, we're okay right now.
Physical, I know you, I know you're busting at the seams, but you're managing?
Yeah, we're managing, yeah, we, we made through that, we made it through that December thing, that was just like, that was crazy, but we got it done. Okay, that's all I have.
Do we need a motion or are we good?
I don't think we need one.
Okay, I have a quick question for you, professional question.
Okay.
And it deals with affordable housing.
Okay.
If we were to ask you, how would we define affordable housing, i.e. the price of the house, selling price of the house? Would you have a feel for that, because you deal with a lot of income...
We, we have, yeah, we have a gal right now, she's elderly, she gets social security in the amount of six hundred and some dollars a month. Or maybe it's, no, maybe, now I take that back, maybe she's seven, but anyhow, her rent is six hundred and fifty. You know, it's like she's got to find some type of something, subsidized housing, and Vista Celesta's full. They have subsidized housing, which is handled through Canyon City, but we only have so many slots, they're all full. And so, the affordable housing, they, they do work and they look, they base it on their income. So, I had a call in to the gal that does that, because I wanted to see if they had a duplex or something that was open because it's killing her, I mean, you know, by the time she pays her rent and where she's, and she's living in the Mountain View Apartments, and the rent's like six twenty-five, six fifty or something like that, and then she has electric heat, and it's like, holy moly, we've done some ELC where we've paid her bills and I've used some community service block grants because they're too different to help with those electric bills for her. But, yeah, so, you know, it's, we have some people who are very, very low income, and so...
Now, when you talk about subsidized housing, you're talking about Section Eight housing?
Section Eight.
Okay, and that's what I wanted to clarify. We sat in on an Affordable Housing Committee meeting yesterday. We sat in on an Affordable Housing Committee meeting yesterday.
Oh, Mike, Mike Lieberman?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And one of the things we talked about was where we thought a median income-
Level would be.
-level would be for affordable housing. Let's take Section Eight completely out of the mix for now. Just affordable housing in this county for anyone. Do you have a feel for that? If I came to you personally and said, "What do you think that income threshold should be?"
You, oh, boy, I don't know. I'd, I'd have to look. I mean, we'd have to kind of figure that out. So, you know, some people are okay. Some people struggle paying, you know, they can, rent's four hundred. They're, they're able to do it. Some of them, not so much. It just depends. But I don't know.
In this county, given your experience, if I said, "Do you think sixty thousand's a reasonable number for the threshold to qualify for affordable housing?" Would you say good, high, low, medium?
I just know a guy that purchased a house for ninety-six thousand dollars, and his payment is six hundred and something. Maybe, yeah. Maybe he could do that, you know, what you're saying, sixty thousand, yeah.
Because I would think-
I think it's gonna depend, because it's gonna depend on, you know, their loans and that type of stuff. What their, you know, what's their payment's gonna be.
Because that's one of the things we need to look at, in this affordable housing thing, is who's gonna be eligible to participate in that, who's not.
Uh-huh.
Uh, that's, to me, one of the driving-
Forces of that, yeah. And I, I know they have-
We'd be talking about household incomes, not necessarily individual.
No, no, but household incomes, exactly, exactly.
Okay.
And, and I know they, you know, they have programs through community, um, upper agency on aging for sweat equity, and they've talked about that. And we don't seem to have anybody that wants to do that. I don't, I don't know. I, you know, I, I'm not sure how that program works either, because that's through area agency on aging, but they're always talking about that. But that's a good question, Tom. I don't know.
Yeah, I might think about that.
We'll, we'll talk about that, and we'll see what we can come up with, you know?
Because I don't know any other department in, in the county that deals with people and income levels and all that more than your department.
Right, because we're looking at people who are on food assistance, and probably that would be the best basis, because the Medicaid levels are a little bit higher. I would say food levels would give us a better understanding of what that would be.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, let me, let me, if I do that, I'll let you know, okay?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Great, thanks.
Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Okay.
Yeah.
High five. And I'm just gonna bring that ten ninety-nine miscellaneous thing to you, okay?
Yeah, let me take a look at it.
Really? No, I'm just gonna give it to you to deal with.
Oh, I'm gonna take a look at it.
Oh, oh, okay. But I could. I'll, I'll bring that to you, because I just, that was odd.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Brenda indicated that she had an item she'd like us to consider.
I saw Rusty was here. What was?
Uh, he just came in for the-
See the rice, then?
Rice's.
I'll go grab my cup there, and that stale dough, I love.
Chris Barr just brought this to me, um, while we were discussing something else. This is the original. This is the VALE grant for, um, the Sheriff's Office. I was involved in the initial application for this grant. I can't remember when that was, twenty sixteen, probably. And it's basically, um, money that is given to them to provide a stipend for one of their employees to, I don't know if it's even one of their employees, someone, to, um, be a victim's advocate for the Sheriff's Office. So, um, basically, he just needs a signature to continue with the grant, continue to receive the grant.
Who does?
Chris Barr.
It's for the Sheriff's Department.
This is a V A L E, or V A?
Yes. V A, it's-
Victim Assistance and Law Enforcement.
Victim Assistance, yeah, from the Eleventh Judicial District.
I was familiar with this program. I'm more of a last advocate on the current one, and on several issues, and it's just a wonderful program. I just wanted to throw that out. So, just from a-
You see, Kelly, you got it. You have a copy.
Appropriateness standpoint, is this able to be added to the agenda at this point, voted on? Or is it something that needs to be on a future agenda?
Well, I, you know, I've questioned the same thing from time to time. Obviously, we have amendment to the agenda item on our agenda, and if we can't amend the agenda and act on it, then what's that even in there for?
I think you can certainly amend this to bring this up as new business, and it's not a controversial thing where it's gonna be able, it doesn't require any expenditure for the economy.
So, you didn't get it in time to get it when we-
Yeah, he just brought it to me like mid-meeting.
And I don't mean to cause an issue with it. I just wanted to make sure we're not doing it off of it.
Right, right. Well, the only other-
Well, we've had it happen in the past. We couldn't add things to it.
Right. Um, the only other thing I would say about this is, it's, I mean, it's new business, but then it's sort of old business, because we're already receiving the grant. This is just paperwork to continue to receive the grant.
So, I'll go ahead and move based on-
Yes.
Based on the recommendation of the Sheriff's Office that we approve the Eleventh Judicial District Victim Assistance and Law Enforcement Board Contract for two thousand and eighteen.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the Victim Assistance and Law Enforcement Board Contract for this grant, two thousand and eighteen. Further discussion? Here, none will proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posnay?
Motion carries.
I'll slide this copy in.